Here.
Vice Mayor Lindenfelder.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We have no one here for the invocation, so could we stand for a moment of silence? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431.0383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. But the first order of business tonight is a special recognition of Chief Robert DeVries and the Kingman Police Department. Chief, I have the honor tonight of reading a letter from our Mojave County Sheriff Doug Schuster that he sent to me, and I wanted to share it with everyone because it speaks to the caliber of our chief, our police chief, and of his department. So this is from Sheriff Schuster, and it says, "Over the -- dear Mayor Miles, over the course of several months, we have been conducting undercover operations around the county. The operation was very successful and resulted in the arrest of nine sexual predators who were soliciting underage female. I would like you to know that our interaction with the Kingman Police -- City Police Department was very positive. You have exceptional employees who demonstrated the utmost professional behavior and demeanor. I will be personally writing letters of appreciation to all involved. I am writing to you to express my appreciation for the support. Chief DeVries was critical in this operation and, as always, represented his department, your office, and the citizens of Kingman in the most positive light. Bob is truly an asset to law enforcement and the citizens of Kingman. Law enforcement is a difficult profession that is ever-changing and evolving. It takes solid leadership that is willing to commit to the overall success of the agency. Chief DeVries certainly falls under this category. He is knowledgeable, experienced, and possesses a wonderful demeanor. I've learned a great deal from his leadership style and am very grateful for his willingness to share knowledge. I believe that law enforcement is at its strongest when it's united and has the support of the people. Law enforcement in Mojave County has never been stronger than it is today with all the local and county agencies working in full cooperation. Please extend my appreciation to Chief DeVries for his involvement as well as his continued support." So, Chief, I would just like to thank you for your personal dedication to excellence and for your leadership of your department and your ongoing professionalism and collaboration. Keeps us all safe, and we appreciate it. And just thank you. Wanted that -- I wanted that to be shared with the public.
I would have given you a bigger hug, I don't know.
Okay. Next order of business is called to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We have several people signed up for call to the public, and the first is Tim Woods, Mojave County Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I am here to ask for volunteers, except for Mayor Jen Miles. I need volunteers for the dunk tank at the Fourth of July.
I already did it.
Jen Miles, last year, got dunked about 147 times.
No way.
Oh, yeah. She was waterlogged.
I pass it on to the --
She was absolutely waterlogged, and the thing about it is, she got so good at it, she would drop, stand up, and hold her arms out like that, never get the top of her body wet. So, we need volunteers for dunk tank, pie-eating contest, watermelon-eating contest, three-legged race, sack races, and things like that. So I am challenging you, each and every one of you, to volunteer for this kind of thing that we're doing on the Fourth of July. Kingman Fire Department last year put on one of the greatest fireworks shows that there was in this town's history last year. I was just talking to the chief, and he's going to do better this year. So, we are also working on a live concert before the fireworks. So like I said, I am challenging you for volunteers. Get out there, get dunked, eat a pie, and all the pies are dark in the center and have whipped cream on the sides. You will get whipped cream in your ears and in your eyes and things like that. So that is my challenge to you on Fourth of July, the City Council, the City of Kingman, to come on out and pitch horseshoes, do all the different games that we're having, and have some fun. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I want to know if you can use our campaign photo.
Absolutely. We will have photos all over. Need a vote for that, Madam Mayor?
No vote needed. I'll be there. But I'm -- I'll leave the dunking to others this year. Becky Fawson.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council for having me here. Just wanted to -- I'm going to wear two hats here very quickly tonight. First of all, from the Chamber, just wanted to invite all of you. Our annual meeting is going to be on June the 20th. It's going to be at 6:00 at Wallapai Mountain Campus of KRC, and Regina Cobb will be our speaker, so I just wanted to extend a personal invitation to all of you for that. And then also invite you out to have some fun. On June 29th, at the Fairgrounds, we'll be doing our Stick Horse Derby. So, please come and join us for that. It is a ton of fun. We do have sponsorships and all that. You can call me at the Chamber about that. And then I'm going to switch hats and put my rotary hat on and invite you. On Friday morning at 7:30 at Lee Williams High School, we're going to be doing the peace pole dedication. And so the peace pole was purchased by our Interact Club last year, and they just got it installed, and so you're going to ask, what's a peace pole? So I'm going to tell you. A peace pole is actually a -- it's a handcrafted monument, and it says on four different sides is the one that they got that says, "May peace prevail on earth." On each of its four six sides, it's in all different languages, and the purpose of it is to remind people to visualize and pray for world peace, which is one of Rotary's main things that they're trying to promote. And the reason the Interactors chose that was after one of the school shootings last year. They said, "Hey, could we please put one of these at our high school?" And it's in Filipino, Spanish, I believe German, and English. So, we would like for you all to come and be there as part of that dedication. And we may try to put another one in a park later on, but -- so you could see it and everything. So, 7:30, Lee Williams High School this coming Friday, and there will be coffee and donuts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Steve Robbins, Stephen Robinson.
I would like to be speaking on a more positive note, like the previous two speakers. But as you know, Senate Bill 1154 changed the primary date from the last Tuesday of August to the first Tuesday of August. As I was reading that bill, there was two sections that jumped out at me based upon the recall that was filed last year by the Kingman Citizens for Honesty, Accountability, and Transparency. That was because on January 30th of this year, City Clerk Muley called and said, "Steve, you have the wrong number. We had the wrong election." Needless to say, I was a little shocked and upset about that. And so the first section of law is 16201. "On the 10th Tuesday prior to a general or special election at which candidates for public office are to be elected, a primary election shall be held." Well, because 16204 defines municipal elections, the municipal elections are not primary. And in fact, if you go to 204E subsection or paragraph one, it says that the first date, the 10th, at that time, the 10th Tuesday before the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, it says there shall be the first election. And at the last August election, two people were elected, Mayor Miles and Councilman Keener, Mello Keener. But it says that it was not a primary election, which was the claim by Vice Mayor Lindenfelder when he spoke to Sidney Muley. And I was shocked about that because, one, Sidney Muley has gone through a three-year training course. She is the noted expert on elections. She had assigned us a number of 410 based upon that first election, which was unique because there was only two named candidates on the ballot, and one of them dropped out. And so when I received the number 410, I was shocked because that's not very many signatures for a recall. It was only on September 24th when Vice Mayor Lindenfelder communicated with both Mr. Cooper and Ms. Muley saying that they used the wrong election. When he spoke to him, he even said, "Let me sit down with you and I'll -- we'll do the simple math." That's a quote from his email. It's almost not verbatim. The point is, this proves that the correct election was the August election. 410 signatures were the correct number, which we turned in, 1,058. We will be filing suit to -- for a writ of mandamus within a week to ask this board to go back on February 25th and start the process from that point when we submitted the original signatures. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to ask, and we refer that to Carl. Just be aware of that.
Well, I'm assuming he is aware. Okay. The consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Is there any item that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Go ahead. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through F as presented.
We have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And I would mention that since this is the second time, the minutes were included in the consent agenda. That has been a change to our procedure. We have no old business, so we'll take on the new business, and item 5A is public hearing and council direction regarding a request to vacate or abandon a portion of parcel D, Wallack Ranch Track 1961B. A request from Mojave Engineering Associates, Inc., agent for William El Nugent, applicant and adjoining property owner to abandon parcel D, Wallack Ranch Track 1961B. This parcel was granted to the city for drainage purposes, the placement of a sewer line, and a sewer lift station. Council direction is sought on whether to pursue a vacation or a vacation of portions of parcel D or exchange of portions of parcel D for APN 32003224. If vacated, staff is seeking council direction on an amount that it believes would be commensurate with its value based upon the degree of fragmentation and marketability. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is abandonment case AB 19004. It involves abandonment of a portion of parcel D, which is located in Wallack Ranch Track The applicant is William El Nugent, the agent for the owner's Mojave Engineering. Parcel D is about 10,000 square feet in size, and this is the location. Shows it being surrounded by a subdivision which is not actually recorded yet, but it has been approved by the council, and they are in process of doing the improvements at this time. The parcel itself was dedicated with an earlier subdivision. A few photos of the site. The top photo is the sewer lift station as seen from North Willow Road, and then a couple of shots of the parcel showing the sewer lift station on both sides of it, on the east and west sides. Surrounding land use is vacant at this time. It is zone R16. It's a single-family subdivided area. The general plan indicates medium-density residential 3D units per acre on the site. This area was annexed in 1977. The preliminary plat for Wallack Ranch 1961 was approved in 97. The final plat for this particular subdivision was approved in 98, and then, as I mentioned, the one that surrounds the site was approved in 2018 and will be recorded after the improvements are completed. The site is generally flat, sloping slightly to the Mojave Wash. There is existing 10-inch sewer main and a 6-inch sewer force main, as well as the sewer lift station in parcel D. However, the lift station and sewer force main are no longer in service. Their site is accessed off Willow Road via a utility ingress easement. This is the site again, showing the existing sewer lines through the site. We've published two notices in the -- on the paper as well as on the site. Property owners with 3 feet were notified. We didn't receive any comments from the public. No objections from Fire Department Frontier Communications or the Flood Control Office. However, cartography and the city engineer did have some comments on the proposal. So parcel D was originally granted to the city for drainage purposes, a sewer line, and a sewer lift station. However, the sewer force main and lift station are no longer in service. There is an active sewer main in the parcel. Parcel D is considered right-of-way under our street policy. Normally, a right-of-way that contains a sewer line or other utilities would not be eligible for vacation. However, the city engineer, Mr. Henry, did comment on the fact that the city needs at least 30 feet for the maintenance operations of the parcel, with 15 feet on either side of the sewer main. Parcel D is about 70 feet wide, therefore, the portions of the parcel could be vacated. Exact location of sewer main would need to be established in a survey of the site, and legal description would need to be prepared if portions of D are vacated. City did spend $676,000 to install a new sewer main, making the lift station no longer necessary. However, it's not yet been abandoned. The city has a contract to abandon the lift station in place, but does not include removing the concrete wet well. It's recommended that the entire station be removed, that portions and portions of D are vacated to avoid future construction issues on residential properties, that the entire station be removed. City engineer did speak to the applicant about possible participation in the contract to completely remove the lift station. This is possible pending council approval. Both the street policy as well as state statutes state that should the council pass a resolution approving the vacation of the right-of-way, that a value, amount, or payment be made by the applicant to the city based upon the fragmentation marketability and the public benefit received from that piece would be abandoned. The alternative to this, under the state statutes, is to allow an exchange of property that are substantially equal value. The applicant does own some nearby parcel that is about 9,500 square feet in size. It does contain a portion of our concrete pathway that goes along Mojave Wash. I'll show you a photo in a moment. So possibly this parcel could be exchanged, portions of parcel D that are vacant in lieu of actually requiring compensation. This aerial shot here shows, on the right side of the slide, is the parcel owned by Mr. Nugent, and then the parcel B that we owned the other side of Mojave Wash. So possibly, we could exchange the parcel owned by Mr. Nugent for the portions of parcel B that would be vacated. The Planning Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 14th and voted 6 to 1 to recommend retaining at least 30 feet of parcel D with 15 feet on each side of the sewer main, and then allowing the remainder of the parcel to either be vacated or exchanged for the other parcel that I mentioned, with following conditions. One would be to survey the area and establish a legal description of the portion that would be vacated or exchanged. The applicant would be responsible to remove the lift station in its entirety prior to any residential construction in the property. Subject to council approval, the city may participate with the lift station removal based upon its current contract to ban the lift station in place. If portions of D are vacated rather than exchanged, the applicant owner would have to give consideration based upon the portions of parcel D that be vacated and the degree of fragmentation marketability. So those are the commission's recommendations. We did receive this afternoon a proposal from the applicant's engineer showing approximately the areas that they would want to receive in the exchange, or either the property exchange or the vacation of this parcel. This would leave about 42 feet of the parcel left. We would need at least 30, so this would be okay, I think, the way it's shown here. The only question would be, they're asking that they leave the lift station in place rather than remove it. So, at this point, staff is seeking council direction based upon the Planning Zoning Commission's recommendation, whether to pursue vacation of portions of parcel D or exchange portions of D for that other parcel that is owned by Mr. Nugent. If council approves vacating portions of parcel D, staff would seek a direction on an amount that would be, council believes is commensurate with the value of the property. In any event, staff will have to bring back a resolution or orders, depending which direction you go, for council's approval at a future meeting. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Go ahead, council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rich, can you go back to the screen that showed the -- what you just received from the engineer?
Yes.
So I would think that he's going to add those to, you know, with the checkered parts to those existing lots?
Correct. Yeah, they're in the process. They have approval for the subdivision that surrounds the site, but it's not actually been recorded, so presumably, they would have to modify that subdivision boundary and incorporate those hatcheries into the boundary.
And then the only thing, other thing about that, of course, if that lift station is of no use, why keep it there? So I know they proposed to leave it, but it doesn't serve a purpose anymore, correct?
Correct. We're not -- it's not in operation anymore.
Okay. Just to clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
Is it just for the expense that they didn't want to remove it, or do we know?
I'm not exactly sure. I didn't talk directly to the engineer about it, other than he just -- this is their proposal, just leave it in place. I know Greg had mentioned the possibility of having them remove the wet well, and I think he can maybe clarify that point a little bit.
We're waiting for Greg. Just a reminder, please turn on your mic and speak into it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, when the city installed the gravity main, the idea of abandoning the lift station was just the same way that someone would abandon their septic tank. They essentially take the top off, punch a hole in the bottom, and backfill and compact it. And at that time, it was contemplated that this lift station would be on city property, so it wouldn't impact any future building, homes, fences, walls, anything of that nature. So, when the applicant came and suggested abandoning portions of this parcel, the idea for removing the lift station at that point was that so it wouldn't end up in somebody's Our contract to just abandon the lift station in place is about just under $5,000. I did talk to the contractor. He has not quoted it, but he said it's going to be substantially higher if he has to remove it. It's 20 feet deep, and it's got substantial amount of concrete on it, so -- and he would have to bring in a larger piece of equipment. So I don't know the exact cost, but I -- he did tell me it would be substantially higher to remove the lift station than to leave it in place. I think this proposed map here they're showing would have the wet well outside of the proposed backyard. Just barely on the line, I guess, but I think as long as it's a city property, staff and we've been in close contact with our public works folks, would have no problem leaving it on city property as opposed to paying the expense of having it removed. Hopefully that may help explain.
Mr. Henry, so if that well is filled in, as you're saying, and it is -- it no longer presents a hazard to anyone going through there who happens to have it in their -- next to their backyard?
Yeah. If it's outside of their property, they should never be building a fence or any structure on it. So, in my opinion, yeah, there should be no harm in leaving it in place.
So the fence would come down, and it would be condemned, like you mentioned, condemning a septic tank. It would just be filled in and then capped over with dirt?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Who would cover the cost of that under this proposal of filling in the well?
We have a quote in which we would pay the $5,000.
Okay, so have we -- but we still have to address the value of the land that they are receiving. So I guess the options for that included an exchange or market value of the land? And do we have any idea of the market value of that land?
Well, there's no requirement that you get an appraisal. An example would be, last year, there was a -- we'd abandoned a little piece of right-of-way down here in the downtown area. It was a few strips along, I think it was Oak Street and Second, and we just used the -- it was based upon the square footage value of the property that was sold, the adjacent property. So that was what we suggested, and the council accepted that. So you could base it off what the surrounding property is valued at, and I don't know what that number is right now. Or you could do the exchange, which does not involve any money, just exchanging property for property.
Well, it kind of seems like getting the cost of our -- filling up our well would be kind of nice if that benefit, you know, if the benefit was large enough to the property owner that he's receiving, but we would have to get that appraised.
That is true. And I would just point out that from our staff point, we like the idea of the exchange because the parcel that's shown there, 32003224, I'm not sure how it happened, but when the channel along the -- the pathway along the channel was built, it was built across that property. And that used to be a portion of Coronado Street right-of-way that was abandoned to Mr. Nugent with the idea that he was going to incorporate that into his subdivision, but that didn't happen. So he still owns that parcel, and there is a piece of pathway on it, and then there's some drainage that flows north on Glen Haven Way and exits a drainage parcel there and does cross that property too. So from that standpoint, I think we would likely recommend the exchange of property so that city would take control of that, since we do have a public facility, public need for it.
Do we control the rest of that sidewalk?
Yes.
In that portion?
Yes.
Okay.
There was some oversight when that was built, some many years ago, and it's built on Mr. Nugent's property at this point. So that's the reason that exchange got brought up.
Yes.
So with that... Oh, thank you. Are we going to -- we were going to fill that in anyway. So the $5,000 is already planned because the city needed to do that today here and had nothing to do with the plan to exchange.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember. Yes, councilman, wait.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. If, if the city were to do an exchange of, of land and the lift, is it a lift station? The lift station were to remain on that property, does the city have any, like, lingering liability for, for that?
If it were to, if it were to remain on the city land, or remain on?
No, if we, if the exchange were to happen in terms of, like, parcel, or exchanging that land for the 32, 32003224?
If, if the, if the, if the property were given back to Mr. Nugent and the lift station remained on, on that, so it would be private property, then yes, we would be very concerned about having that removed in its entirety and backfilled and compacted to the necessary standards. But if it's going to remain on city property, that concern would, would, would go away. There might still be some liability for the city having it there, but it would be city property. So there should never be any structures or anyone really doing any, any work on that land that the, the city wasn't aware of, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that answered our question. Did you have another question?
Well, actually a comment, Madam Mayor. I actually propose, or the, the thought, the idea of the land exchange, but also, but keeping, we have to keep that easement. I mean, Rich showed that latest proposal from the developer's representative. I like that idea, so we keep, because obviously we have a ten-inch sewer main down that property, so we need to keep that.
All right.
But with the cost of filling that hole in, given to the developer. In other words, we do the land exchange with that proposal.
Do the land exchange, keep a thirty-foot section?
Or is it forty-two, Rich, did you say?
Forty-two, forty-two foot section for the city property? No, they get forty-two. We keep, we keep forty-two so that we keep that lift station. Okay, thank you. I'm glad you brought this up, because I, okay, forty-two, but the lift station is on our land, but let the developer pay for the fill?
Correct.
I kind of see that logic.
And with the exchange, that way we don't have to, we don't have to pay for an appraisals and it's all?
That's true. Is that a motion?
Yes, that, that is a motion.
Okay, we, we have a motion. Do we, we have a motion to exchange the property outside of the city section, the property for the, I'm not going to say this better than, than Mr. Henry. Yeah, come back. We're going to, we're going to keep forty-two feet of the strip.
Yeah, it's, it's probably, it's probably?
We're going to exchange the balance of it for the other property, and we're going to keep the lift station on our property and have the developer pay for filling it in. That's the motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, that needs to be addressed to staff, because staff has to bring that back to us for a vote, correct?
Yes, yes, this, this would have to come back.
This is just, this is just directing staff to work on it.
Well, and we also have a public hearing.
Correct, and directing staff to work in that direction is what we're trying to?
Yes, you're right. That's a very good point. But I still have to have a public hearing. So I, should we direct staff before the public hearing, or shall we wait?
You can do it any way you choose. You have a motion and a second already on the floor, I believe, but you can still have that discussion. And if you need to make any modifications to that motion, you can do that after the public hearing if you chose.
Okay, who wants a second?
I thought I heard a second.
I almost did.
Almost, oh, I apologize.
It was a good, it was a good first.
I was a little confused on what the motion was.
It was a good first, yeah, I was trying to get it to. But what I'd like to do, since that really wasn't a formal second, I'd like to hold the, the direction until we have had the public hearing. So at this time, I would open a public hearing to discuss this parcel D of Wallack Ranch, tract 1961B. Is there anyone that would like to address the council regarding this, this request? Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Third time, anyone that would like to address the council on the request to vacate or exchange? I'm going to close the public hearing. Now I'll return to the council, and we have a motion that directs staff. Is that fair to say?
Madam Mayor, I will second Councilmember Watkins' motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I'm not going to repeat it, so all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution, item 5B, resolution number 5219, adoption of fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative budget. The tentative budget as presented includes changes recommended at the budget work sessions on May 9th and May 10th, 2019. Any additional modifications made to the tentative budget tonight will be incorporated into the final budget scheduled for adoption in two weeks, on June 18th, 2019. Staff recommends council adopt resolution number 5219, thereby adopting the City of Kingman's tentative budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. Good evening, Director Moline.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Well, we are next to the very last step of the budget process, which is tonight, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 20. The tentative budget, as the mayor stated, does incorporate revisions that were made at the preliminary budget meetings that held on May 9th and May 10th. There is a worksheet attached to the agenda that lists all of those revisions. I do want to make a note that the tentative budget, once adopted, cannot, the appropriations cannot be increased as we move into the final budget. They can only be decreased in between those two times, so something to keep in mind. And also, we are under our annual expenditure limitation by just about $600,000. So just to give a few slides visually of what you will be approving this evening as, as proposed, if that is the case. Just a quick comparison from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. The appropriations for fiscal year 20 are $214 million compared to fiscal year 19 of $121. That's primarily some large projects. We also incorporated a $30 million Dross cleanup project, too. And then, of course, the general fund, we're all interested in the general fund. And so by department, the total appropriations for the general fund are $34.5 million. Sixty-three percent of those are for public safety. And incorporated in that is the $3.1 million payment to the PSPRS for unfunded liability. When we look at the funds, now this is not a comprehensive list of our funds, but the funds that we tend to, to monitor or that are of very much interest. And those are most of our operating funds. And so the appropriations there are $69.2 million in fiscal year 20 compared to just under $65.5 million in fiscal year 19. Some operating budget highlights that are included in the fiscal year 20 budget, so employee compensation, a 2% increase for all full-time employees, and then also some compression adjustments to selected public safety employees. And then, of course, that PSPRS unfunded liability payment of $3.1 million coming out of the general fund. We also have some, an impressive list of capital project highlights. And of course, we have our I-11 East Kingman Connection Project, the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI of just under $47 million. And the Kingman Crossing Boulevard. And it is important to note that the state budget did include $20 million in appropriations for the traffic interchange. We also have Fire Station Two Building Remodel and Training Facility, our downtown sewer outfall line of over $12 million. The downtown, the downtown streetscape design is also included in fiscal year 20's projects, as well as a reclaimed water recharge project, our Keno Avenue Main Tanks Transmission Line coming out of our Water Projects Fund, and the Airport Master Plan Updates continuing in fiscal year 20 as well. And with that, that are, those are the highlights, very high-level highlights of the fiscal year 20 tentative budget. And staff is recommending approval of the resolution before you this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Moline?
I'd just like to say well done to both Tina and to Ron. The presentation of the budget, and you can tell you guys put a lot of hard work into it. It's a really professional-looking document.
Thank you. I'd also like to make sure that Melissa Ellico is included in that. She was a big portion of that. Thank you.
Very, very well done.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion on the, adopting the tentative budget.
I move we adopt resolution number 5219, the tentative budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 5219, the tentative 2019-2020 budget. All in favor, was there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, the next order of business, permit fee waiver discussion. Effective April 1st, 2018, resolution 5129 to set a fee waiver on commercial building permit fees. This resolution will expire June 30th, 2019, setting the fees back to normal. Staff is, seeks direction from council.
Mayor, I just want to kick us off on this. This is actually going to be a tag-team effort. It takes three of us, I guess. But just wanted to, to bring this and have a discussion with the council. And it has been Chief Rhodes and his team who've basically, of course, under building inspection, have dealt with this. So of course, they've worked with the, with the numbers and with the developers and have some of the insight necessary to moving forward. And kind of based on what our recommendation is going to be, has been ongoing conversations about, about this fee waiver. Of course, Tina and her team deal with the, how this affects the budget, how the refunds ultimately look like. So it really made sense that all three of us would have, be part of this discussion and presentation to you folks. So as we go through, we're not going to step on each other, but we, there may be things that come up, and we're just going to take turns to try to present as much of the information as we can so that the council can have the information they need to make the, the decision. So with that, I know Tina and Jake have worked on a really great presentation for you that is not boring, Chief. So go ahead.
So good evening, Mayor and council. So I apologize for this not being your pack, but we did make handouts so you could kind of follow along and not try to fall on the screen. There's a lot of information. It really starts coming together at the end, once we really start making comparisons. But we wanted to do, go back in time a little bit, where we talk about the resolution 5129. And when we adopted that in February, it got enacted April 1st of 2018. And that'll come to light here as we go through a couple of things. So in that, we, and this is straight out of the resolution, the council authorized a commercial building fee waiver for the purpose of incentivizing commercial development and redevelopment located within City of Kingman limit, City of, within Kingman City limits. Any property, commercial properties located within the city are eligible for 100% reduction in permit fees, plan reviews, and inspection fees. And the important part of that, all of that within that resolution, is really two things. Incentivizing commercial development and redevelopment. So those are the two real things that we'll focus on throughout, and I'll kind of walk through what, what that means, because we charge fees for a lot of things. And you see kind of two categories that we'll really compare. New construction, which is self-explanatory, and we'll walk through that number. But when we talk about other things that we charge, we run, we run several pages of data and permit fees and things, but you see all these other things that come into there. And really, what we're talking about is those remodels and some of the additions. So that was, that's what we're talking about. We also charge fees for awnings and commercial towers, electric gas, retaining walls, et cetera. Those don't apply under this. So you'll see where this, this all starts coming together. So what we did was we went fiscal year to fiscal year. It was easier for us to run reports and really compare apples to apples. We do have a little three-month lag from April 1st, when this started, to June 30th, right in, in last year, the last fiscal year. It really doesn't have an impact on the, on the overall scope of things, so we thought it was easier to stay fiscal year to fiscal year. So with that, in fiscal year 2018, there's 122 total permits, a little over $13 million, 13.8 in total valuation, 233,000 in total fees, 220,000, almost 221,000 fees paid. And of those waived, which would be that three-month period from April through June 30th, would be a little over $12,000. So breaking that down a little bit into the, into the things that really we're, we're talking about. Eight total permits issued for new commercial, a little over $4 million, over 106,000 in total fees. You can see where the last line of this slide, that's where Jake got his fingers in the PowerPoint. So just disregard that line, because it makes absolutely no sense. We may have looked at this a few times today and, and one, one fewer than I should have, so. And other, and again, we're talking about that whole category of other things. 114 total permits issued, 9.8 million in total valuation, 126,000 total fees, 114,000 in, in total fees paid, and then there's that 12, a little over 12,000 in fees waived in that three-month period. So that's what we're talking. The highlights of the new commercial, Circle K, Dunkin' Donuts, Devault Electric, Gas Grub, Human Bean. And this was all based on when they applied. And again, it's by application date is when they get waived. So some of these just fell outside of that parameter. I was trying to keep pace with Tina, Tina's speed here, so that's what that was.
So then that other group, we've got, we broke it out into three different categories, and that's because we're going to do some comparisons later on. We've got the addition permits, the remodel permits, and then that group of all of those other permits. And so again, we're just trying to break down the data so that you have more information to absorb and, and make a decision. But for the remodels, you'll see the valuation were $8.2 million, and the total number of permits issued were 45. And then that other big group is where we have a lot of permits, but a lot of small valuations tied to those permits. So we're really looking at those, those remodel numbers. So then, looking at the highlights for those remodel permits, you'll see that there were a total number of seven permits that received waivers. Total dollar amount that we waived was $9,554. Now, the table below, we just wanted to show that of that $8.2 million in valuation and of all of the fees charged and all of the fees waived, there were five permits issued to these two businesses, K R M C and Mojave Mental Health. And you'll see that of the total valuation in remodels, they comprised 57%. They comprised 42% of the total fees, and they comprised 72% of the fees waived, just to give you an idea where most of those fee waivers, valuations, and fees were charged.
So if we jump into where we are today, so we're going to talk about fiscal year 19. And remember, that was enacted in April of 2018. So July 1 of last year is what we're talking about. July 1st to present is, is the date we're talking about now. 107 total permits. You can see the total fees on, on that were 433,000, almost 434. And then we waived 200, a little over 226,000 for building and over 6,200 for engineering in those fees. So that's what we waived in this year. Commercial, new commercial, six total permits, a little over, almost 10 million in total valuation, 214,000 in total fees, but we waived of that 66,000, a little over 66,000. In other, and again, that's our broad category, 101 total permits, over 18 million valuation. And of that, we waived over almost 160,000. So that's what we waived there. Again, the big highlights in the new commercial, Dairy Queen, Tough Shed, Mojave County Courthouse, Planet Fitness, and then Flying J. So we have several of those, and you can see where fees collected, 148,000 versus fees waived for 66,000, so.
And just to go back quickly, you'll notice on some of those, most of those have not yet finalized. So we really only have Planet Fitness that has finalized. So then, again, that group, and you'll see here why we included addition in fiscal year 18, and that's because addition is so large in fiscal year 19. And then, of course, remodels is a very large group. group. But in that addition, you'll see that there were only six permits issued for a total valuation of $10.5 million. And in valuation, remodel, 49 for 7.4. And again, that big group of the other 46 permits issued for a small valuation, considering the number of permits. So then, looking at the addition, and again, just taking a few of the permatees, I guess, who the permits were issued to, looking at our total fees in dollars that we collected for addition permits, and there were six total, two comprised almost 90, well, over 92% of the total fees that we charged. And that was KRM-C and Mojave Mental Health, again, in fiscal year 19 for addition. And then, as far as the fees waived, 92% of the total fees waived applied to KRM-C and Mojave Mental Health. Then we look at the remodels. So many more permits for remodel permits. But when we pull out those large valuations, there are a total number of six that are related to KRM-C, the Jerry Ambrose Veteran Center, and Flying J. And of those six, they make up 41% of the total fees that we collected and 41% of the fees that we waived as well. So the other 43 permits made up that other difference. Do you want to do the comparisons between 18 and 19? Okay. So when we look at the comparisons for our new commercial permits between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19, you'll see there's a slight decline in fiscal year 19 as far as the number, but valuation is higher. And then, of course, our total fees, we know that we waived more in 19. We had a full year to waive those. But I did want to point out, or we wanted to point out, that the courthouse comprised 49% of the total valuation of these new permits, 41% of the total fees, and 45% of the total fee waivers.
And one thing to add on the courthouse, I believe that the waiving of those fees was actually kind of in place before this, or that was a motion we were going to have regardless of whether this fee waiver was in place or not. That was the discussion back there.
Thanks for that. That's true. And then when we look at those other two bigger categories, valuation-wise, addition and remodel fiscal year 18 versus fiscal year 19, we are slightly down in fiscal year 19. But valuation, we are higher. So in fiscal year 19, KRM-C and Mojave Mental Health comprise 96% of the addition valuation permits. And then, KRM-C, Flying J, and Jerry Ambrose Veteran Center comprise 59% of the remodel valuation permits. Assistant Chief Eaton wasn't able to be here this evening, but he was part of this as well. And he did want to share and shared with us that they tried to ask the businesses as they came in and applied, are you applying because of the commercial fee waivers? And so there were two that actually noted, and they were local downtown businesses, that said, yes, we are applying for the building permits because of the fee waivers. So important to know. And the total fees that were waived for those two local downtown businesses were about $2,000.
So one of the questions that has come up with regards to kind of the program, ultimately, the council was hoping to see increase in economic development within the community. Other considerations, although we do not have data that speaks to these, we did want to talk about job creation, sales tax revenue, benefits versus the waived fees. And so in that, I think, based on the list of businesses that you saw for both 18 and 19, that we have, I would say, not a lot of jobs that were created. And we do not have, out of those businesses, a lot of businesses that are new or went through a remodel, were not big giant players in sales tax. So I think it's fairly safe to say that we did not recoup sales tax revenue from the fee waiver. And so we just wanted to point that out. We have so many of them that haven't finalized yet. The final data for this will be months incoming still. But I think just kind of based on the businesses, we're delighted to have all of them here and having them in business. But most of them, you know, they all employ a couple of full-time employees, and the rest are made up of part-time employees. They are sales tax generators, but not, like I said, to the point of being able to make back the money that we were hoping to gain. I will say that I think that this has sent a message, so on the benefit versus the fee waiver. I think it has sent a message to our businesses that we are business-friendly. And that is something that we absolutely want to have, a reputation with both people that are remodeling and looking to come to Kingman to do business. But with that, I think the long and short of it is that we would like to see a change in the program and not continue it the way it has been going. So what we have seen, and based on what Tina already indicated, was that because we had a couple of downtown businesses or owners that wanted to redo their space because of the fee waiver, what we're suggesting is that we change the program from an overall city program to a very directed, targeted program. We've listed up here, in looking at areas where we would like to see development, and where we think people could utilize the discount the most, is in our downtown area and on 66. Basically, from where Beale Street starts down to the interchange, to I-40, is kind of where we're looking, that we would make the recommendation. To do that would require us to go through a process to designate this area as an area that we want to target. It's not just a matter of being able to do it. There's a process. So what we're recommending, based on all of the information that we provided tonight, is that we look to target, we go through the process, we let the fees expire June 30th, the end of this month, and then start a new program that's much more directed. So that's kind of what we have. Was there anything else, team, that you wanted to add to that?
Thank you. Are there questions for Manager Foggan or Chief Rhodes or Director Mullin?
Can you give us an idea of the timeline in setting this up where we would waive fees for Beale Street and Route 66? I ask because I know that the renovation project with the old theater, you know, I've already talked to them, and having these fees waived is very important. Their budget is already so small. So if they're in the process, they're gutting it now, and I'd hate to see these fees pop up on them and really slow the progress they've already made.
So our hope is, depending on what the council's decision is tonight, is we would get to work on that targeted districting immediately and would hope to have something back to you in July, one of the July council meetings. So I think the turnaround could be fairly quick. Carl, do you see that differently? Based on the information that we've talked about, it's not something that has months and months of time to do that.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead. You first.
I was just, what was your reasoning on stopping at 40 on 66? Why don't we go all the way down to the city limits on 66?
I don't have a good reason.
Okay. That's okay.
We'd be happy to look at it along all of 66.
Just spread that out. 66 is a beautiful opportunity. There's so much potential. I just think spreading that out would be a really amazing thing to do.
Okay. Councilman Watkins?
I agree with Councilmember Nelson because, for example, the Kmart Shopping Center, you know, we need that to be redeveloped. The Texaco Station down the street, a little bit farther on the opposite side of the street, and that whole area and through there, there's some areas that need more development. And so I think to encourage Route 66, that'd be great. And also, besides Beale Street downtown here, I would almost like to enlarge it a little bit for a good portion of downtown, to encourage downtown development. So just thoughts.
Vice Mayor? I'd like to also make comments. Thank you for all of the data. It's important, at least to me, when we're making public policy, that we actually have some data to make decisions on. I agree with the downtown, absolutely target that as an incentive. And kind of building on Councilmember Watkins, where he wants to expand in the downtown, perhaps including Gasoline Alley as an incentive to those business owners to improve their properties.
That's a great idea.
And then also, I'd like to suggest still including new restaurant and retail that's not in Kingman already. I know that the city did a new restaurant retail survey. I know that the city is adding a new restaurant retail person to ED staff. And I think that that would be a really good economic development tool for that person to be able to offer to businesses, restaurant retail that aren't here right now. As you know, I mean, you've done a lot with trade area, and a lot of those businesses that were seeking for restaurant retail, they want to see a trade area of X amount of size. So anything that helps us, you know, if you're trying to satisfy a trade area of 100,000 people or 200,000 people, and that means they're only going to put one somewhere, anything that can help us to locate those here in Kingman would be great.
We will definitely, we work with the attorney to see what we can do for targeting something like that. Definitely bring that back to you.
I think these are all good suggestions. And I really like the idea of targeting the areas for development. Because, like you said, we're glad these businesses that benefited this past year are here. We're glad that they were able to receive this benefit. But I think a more targeted approach would be wise. And so the question becomes, should we, I think we still have to make a decision about extension, whether it's three months or what.
If you wanted to make the extension, you would make it. If you want it just to expire, it will expire June 30th.
Okay. So the question to the council, I think, is, to the decision is whether to let it expire or whether to extend it for some period of time until the special districts are in place. So I would open it for...
I guess my question to Manager Foggan would be, hearing the dialogue that we've had, I would hate to have this expire. How much time do you think staff needs to come back with something that staff, or that council could approve?
I think we can do the turnaround pretty quickly. Like I said, I think we can have you the targeted language, whether it's the first or second meeting in July, pretty easily.
Then I would entertain a motion on the decision as to whether to let this expire, let the fee waiver expire.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that Manager Foggan work with his staff to bring back a targeted incentive policy to council prior to the current fee waiver expiring. Hopefully as close to.
I don't think we can get it by the next meeting.
No. So I'll modify as close to to the first meeting in July. Does that work?
Can we modify that to say, give them 30 days?
Sure.
Or is that something, can we do that, Carl? Extend it 30 days instead of extending it three months? Can we do 30 days?
You can extend, yeah, we can bring back anything you're asking. If you want to extend the resolution, we can have extension next meeting. That's easy. That's totally up to you how you want to do that, for however long you want to extend it.
It sounds like it's six to one, a half dozen the other, probably, at this case. If it's going to be July 4th or 5th that we speak, then...
I can rephrase it. Just a targeted policy to council the first meeting of July and extending the current policy? Would that cover all the bases?
Sure.
It sounds like the fear is, we're worried about the downtown businesses possibly needing to re-permit themselves during that timeframe. Not necessarily the KRM-C or anybody else is going to need it, but that the downtown businesses are...
So the way I take it is, what we'll do is, we would have another resolution that extends the current one at least 30 days. And in our attempt to preferably get it at the first meeting in July, which I think is probably doable, but I just can't guarantee it. If it's not the first, it'd be the second. But I think we can make sure there's...
I have a question. Does it make sense to extend it until the council adopts a targeted incentive policy? And that way, if it's 15, 30, or 45 days...
I would prefer to actually have a hard date.
Oh, you'd rather have a hard date?
Yeah. So if you want to call it 60 days, then we just repeal it later?
Well, okay. Okay, so you're...
You want me to withdraw my motion, and you can make a better motion?
Then I guess what I would ask is, to make this simple...
Yes.
Ask for, yeah, exactly. Just, I think, do a motion to extend the current policy an additional 90 days. That will be automatically repealed, and we'll make sure we put the language in it when we adopt the new plan.
Okay. Okay, I got that.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Okay.
And we will endeavor to bring it to you the first meeting in July.
Okay. So I move that we extend the current fee waiver policy for 90 days and repeal it as soon as council adopts a targeted incentive fee waiver policy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Yay. I like it. I like the way that came out. Okay, so, item 5D, public hearing and council direction regarding a request to vacate or abandon parcel K of Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106. A request from Renee Grigg, applicant and adjacent property owner, for approval of the vacation abandonment of parcel K of Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106. The parcel was granted to Mojave County for drainage purposes and overhead utilities. This subdivision was annexed into the City of Kingman in 1991. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-2 to recommend denial of the vacation of parcel K of Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106. Staff recommends approval of the applicant Renee Grigg's request to abandon parcel K of Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106, with the condition that an easement be recorded in its place. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so the applicant is present tonight. Again, we're asking for parcel K, which is approximately 7,530 square feet and is located between lots 8 and 9 of Block 10, Kingman Camelback Unit, Track 1106, on the west side of Christie Plaza. The final plat for Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106, was recorded in 1979, and parcel K was dedicated to Mojave County for drainage and overhead utility purposes. This area was annexed into the City of Kingman in 1991. The purpose of the applicant's request is that they didn't realize that this was a portion of their property that was owned by the city and approved this some time ago with landscaping and has been maintaining it. The applicant would like to purchase this area, own and maintain it. Also, the applicant will record a public drainage easement along with the transfer of ownership if this request is approved. Excuse me. Here's the location of the parcel right here. This is parcel K. The applicant lives on this side, and then they have a neighbor on this side. There's also a drainage parcel that runs along the back as well. Christie Plaza is over here. Here's a view of the parcel as it exists today. And again, here's the applicant's home on one side and their neighbor on the other. And here's the drainage parcel. So the site was posted and the public was notified. So, the site was posted, and the public was notified. Thirteen surrounding property owners were notified by first-class mail. John and Janice Mayer, who actually live on this side here, they did come to the office before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to get clarification on how this abandonment would affect them, and after a brief meeting, they had no objection to the abandonment of parcel K. The city engineer stated that the safest strategy to ensure that drainage and utilities are not affected would be for the city to keep parcel K. Otherwise, if this request is granted, there will need to be a provision for reserving both a utility easement as well as a drainage easement over the entire parcel. Hubert Works was not overly concerned, but had some concerns of how it would affect future development by the adjacent property owner and maintenance of the subject property. Sutton Lake had no objection to the abandonment of any of the easements or drainage, well, it's actually parcels right now, as long as they're remained easements. So, at the meeting, here's a little recap. The majority of the public comments received from neighboring property owners were in support of the applicant's request to abandon the drainage parcel. One neighboring property owner seemed to be concerned that if he were to build his home on his property, which is at the rear of the part of the neighbor's property, actually, that he would not be able to extend the water system if the parcel was abandoned. But to clarify, this is a drainage parcel and not a parcel used for extending water service. The property owner was also concerned that the abandonment of the drainage parcel would affect the drainage from his property. However, if Mr. Main basically were to build a home on his property, he would have to ensure that the current drainage path is not disturbed and plan for onsite drainage. So, at this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-2 to recommend denial of the vacation of parcel K of Kingman Camelback Unit 1, Track 1106. If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to ask them, and the applicant is present also.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Sylvia, the Planning and Zonings vote, do you think that was based on the recommendation from the Engineering Department that we needed, that the safest thing to do is to keep that city property?
Council, Councilman Staley, sorry about that. I couldn't answer as to why they answered, but that definitely had a stance in how they voted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, just a comment. I did go and look at the property, and I just am so surprised at their, the way they voted. I really just don't see an issue, and I'm just not convinced. I feel that we should vote in favor of Ms. Griggs, but.
May I speak as far as just being there for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Certainly.
What I gathered from most of them was easement concerns, a little stressed about what that was going to be, especially since the person that owns, Ms. Griggs owns it, and the prior owners had no idea that this was a city piece of property. So, they, so there's a concern there that if we go to an easement, how are we going to know it's an easement? So, that's a legitimate concern in that regard. So, we would need to take a little bit bigger step as far as setting things up so that, I don't know what that step would be, but I think that was actually one of the bigger concerns, was that there are, it's overhead utilities, there's no reason for that to be an issue. The drainage is already there, it's already set. The landscaping that she's done has not actually affected any of the drainage in that area. So, as far as I could tell, and to be able to tell you, that's what I gathered, was that's the reasoning behind their vote for that.
Any other questions?
Can we hear from Mr. Henry about why?
Certainly. Mr. Henry?
Can you give us some more information about your opinion that was, that we just saw as a reasoning to vote against?
I would say that that's almost a fact, that it's the safest thing for the city would be to keep the property, and I would almost make that on any time we're talking with drainage. And keep in mind, I've had, I've probably had a couple experiences dealing with drainage where people have built fences and other structures in it, and, you know, obviously blocked it and caused damage. So, that's the background of that comment that I made. This situation here may be a little more atypical. I would agree with the assessment that what's been done here hasn't impacted the drainage to a degree. And I guess that, hopefully, that helps some, but that's the reason. It's just that there's been numerous cases throughout the city where drainage parcels, drainage easements, rightaways, and things where structures get built and block drainage and cause problems for the city. And fortunately, I've, part of my job is to deal with those situations, so that's why I made a comment. I wouldn't necessarily say it's applicable here, but you may see that comment again in the future on certain things that recently come up, but.
Councilman Watkins, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually went out and walked the site, met Ms. Griggs about this, and Sylvia pointed out on that other overhead, Sylvia, could you go back to that other overhead where it shows the overhead of the?
Yes.
Yes. There's actually a little wash back on the backside of that property, and it drains to the northwest and hits that other drain there. And there was, basically, over the last 30 years, there's no evidence that water has, except for what's on that own property itself, has run down per landscaping, and it has not affected it negatively. So, to me, it makes sense to vacate, to sell it, to vacate it, and not even be, not even have an easement, because there's no water drainage on it. I mean, not from other parcels. There's no evidence of it. So, and she's offered to pay the city for it, too.
Okay, then my question would be, what is the value of the easement? What does that allow that would not be allowed if there was no easement?
Mayor, the appraisal came up to $6,000.
Pardon?
$6,000.
No, no, I don't.
Oh, you mean the other value?
What is the benefit of us having that easement? Yeah, not the monetary value, the benefit to the city versus no easement.
You know, this particular subdivision, there's no drainage reports on file. But looking at the plat, and I did look at the plat, there's drainage easements. I want to believe that the drainage easement was provided at this location for a reason. Whether it's a minor amount, I would say it's definitely not a major amount, but I would, the land definitely slopes from west to east in this area, and so that would be conducive of the way this easement is and drainage flowing in it. So, it probably is a minor amount. I don't have a qualitative number for what the 100-year flood might be through this area. There was never one provided when this subdivision was created. You know, I do know the engineer was Jim Devlin. He was a very competent engineer, and he created a drainage easement on this platform for a reason, I want to believe, so. I always would err on the side of caution when it comes to reserving an easement, which would give the city the right to go in there, perhaps do some work if there were a problem. And I would encourage the council to err on that side of caution as well, so. And I don't think that's an issue for the applicant, that's.
Right, I think that's true. Thank you.
Craig, I have one question. No matter what happens with, on the city's side, from the notes, it looks like Sutton Lake said, "We have no objection to abandonment of any other easements or drainage easement as long as their 8-foot public utility easement remains." Is that?
So, there's an overhead utility easement, which allows for drop lines in there, and I think, I haven't talked to specifically with Unisource on it, but that would be my understanding, is that they want to maintain that as well.
Councilman, so the response I got from Sutton Lake is that they have no plans for overhead utilities in that particular parcel. So, they were okay with an easement being placed there.
So, whatever the city does, if the city were to sell it, it doesn't negatively impact them? Is that right?
As long as we replace it with an easement. And that's what I would do at the next meeting if it's approved, bring back a resolution with easement to also record upon approval.
You know, looking long-term, it is important to, I think, maintain access, because people, you can build fences, you can do things of that on your own property that could impact our ability to serve the customers if that 100-year flood comes through. And lately, I'm convinced that could happen, 18 inches of snow. So, this is a public hearing, but before we have the public hearing, would the applicant like to come and speak to council, Renee Grigg?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman. My name's Renee Grigg, and I've lived at 556 Christie Plaza for approximately 11 years. And was very surprised when I realized my yard was an easement, to be quite honest, so that's my bad. Last year, when we had the torrential rains that we've had, more so than we've had in a very long period of time, I can tell you that the easement behind my house, the 30-foot easement back there, all the water goes down that 30-foot easement, and it goes down to the parcel to the north of me, it runs down that way, and goes toward the wash, which would be towards the water tank that you can see in the pictures. I, when I came to speak to the council the first time, I think Mr. Main was, his biggest concern was that he had to run water from the water tank down the road and back up that parcel. And I think that's what was the main confusing issue for the planning and zoning, and Mr. McCoy kept reiterating that there was no water easement there, it was a drainage easement. So, I would be more than happy to maintain, leave the easements there. I would just personally like to know that I had some interest in my backyard, so that's my main reason here. My neighbors on all sides of me have come with me in support of this today. As far as my neighbor across the street, Ann Marie Hayden, if it wasn't for that landscape and rock that the water, if it did come down, I think she'd have more flooding. The property to the north of me that doesn't have any maintenance on it at all, the water comes rumbling down there, comes down Christie Plaza, and is cutting out the corner of her property right there. So, nobody's been negatively affected by this easement in 30 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make one comment that's more of the attorney, I mean, this isn't an easement, this is city property.
We're wanting to make.
The city owns it, fee title.
I think, I think, really, as she was saying, she has no problem with an easement. She would like to own the property but have an easement, yeah. This is a public hearing, and I'll call the public hearing to order and ask, is there anyone that would like to address the council on this issue? Is there anyone that would like to address the council on the issue? Third time, is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue to the council? I'm closing the public hearing, and I would open it for discussion with council or a motion.
Mayor, I'll move that we go on ahead and approve the request to abandon parcel K as long as we have an easement. That would be the only thing that I would add to that. That's it. For $60,000, the sale would occur.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to vacate the property with the inclusion of an easement. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. The next order of business is department reports. Do we have any this evening? Okay, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability attendance at conferences and seminars. Councilwoman Nelson? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, attended both Economic Development Advisory Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, and EDAC was mostly just staff reports. The Historic Preservation Commission was, they had a lot more business. One of the things that they are interested in working with council on are two of the work sessions that will be coming up. They're very interested in seeing code enforcement, the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code enforcement of that within their historic district of Kingman. And I think they also mentioned the hotel deals, so I'm sure they'll be tracking those.
Thank you. Councilman Watkins?
I just, I know Madam Mayor and Councilman Lincolnfelter and myself, we attended the City Expo last week, and it was a great event, and I'm just thankful and proud of our city staff and all our city employees and what they do and how they represent our city. They're doing a great job.
Yes, it was fabulous. Thank you.
I just have one announcement, thank you. I just wanted to announce that the Sleep in Heavenly Peace nonprofit organization, Kingman Chapter, is planning another build to build some beds for kids in need. So, that build will be on the 15th of June, so next Saturday. And the organization is always looking for volunteers who want to give their time or donations or applications for beds. So, if anyone had any questions, they can direct those and direct me, right?
Thank you. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. The one announcement that I have is that we received information back from all of you with regards to our doodle poll question, and our next council workshop on our revenue conversation will be on June 19th at 5:00 in this room. So, just wanted to make everybody aware, an agenda, we will have an agenda out for that in the next couple of days. Thank you for everybody that took the doodle poll, and based on that, the majority of you can attend the 19th, so thank you.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, the 19th? Okay, so I thought I saw an email, so it's 9, okay. Thank you.
5:00. I have two announcements. Well, first, I just wanted to echo Councilman Watkins' comments about the expo. The city did an exemplary job of being out there, and we had a very steady stream of citizens come through, and it was just that opportunity to talk face-to-face with them. I thought the information given out was excellent, the ability to see the equipment, some of the, what runs our lights, and the, just all of the equipment that's used in the city was great. So, thank you to all the employees and for the organization of it, because it went very smoothly. The other announcement is something that will be coming up, I'm sure, in the paper, but yes, today, a press announcement was made by the county, and I wanted to share this, because yesterday, Manager Foggan and I were able to attend a meeting and meet some of the people associated with Pegasus Group. And if you see the announcement, it's going to be that Pegasus Group Holdings and Plus Minus Power have selected Mojave County, Arizona, as the home for their $3 billion renewable energy data system. This is a very exciting new development for our city and county, and congratulations to the, every, all the supervisors. I think Jean Bishop was very, very much a champion for this, and Tammy Ursenbach, the ED director, has done a great job working with us and the city, and also, especially with this Pegasus Group. But I just wanted to read a very short description, because this is really an important foundation for our future in terms of technology infrastructure development and business development. So, Pegasus Group Holdings, a technology infrastructure corporation that develops renewable energy projects, today announced that it has selected Mojave County, Arizona, for the development of its new $3 billion, 340 megawatt solar-powered data center. The Pegasus Group Holdings project, in partnership with Plus Minus Power, will operate a solar field nicknamed "The Hive," and this field will occupy 717 acres just south of Kingman, Arizona, on Interstate 40, just north of the Griffith Energy Facility. Jay Bloom, a member of the group holdings board, said, "We have selected Mojave County for its abundant sunshine, quality labor force, and the overwhelming support of our county." And I would have to add, "Our city." We have worked with the county to help in any way we can. So, as to what this is, they will be having a hyperscale data center, and. and tenants may include cryptocurrency miners. I'm going to let everybody just read up on this when it comes out in the press. Medical companies providing human genome mapping sequencing, movie studies rendering 3D feature films, as well as disaster recovery and data storage services. And any remaining power can be transferred into the national or local power grids. So, this is a very, very big deal for our community, and the people that are involved in this want to be good community partners, and are already working with local businesses on this site. So, $3 billion, and this is phase one. So, we wish them well, and we welcome them to Mojave County. And I think that is all I have this evening. So, now we move to the last item on the agenda, which is council requests for future work session, agenda items, and/or calendar adjustments. Do we have any? Okay, Councilwoman Staley?
I would like to request, at one of the meetings in July, to have the Airport Advisory Commission come and give a presentation to council.
Okay. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries.